I do, um, have served. And I'm pleased to serve in the little headquarters of the United States of America. In the republic, the religion stands unafraid, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. You know, next to the control zone.
So we have Mrs. Eileen Panico.
Here.
Mr. Mark Washaw.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Mylin August joining us virtually.
Present.
Miss, Mrs. Jacqueline Napolitano Ferno.
Present.
Mrs. Lee Kennedy. Then we have Dr. Linda Adams.
Present.
Bridget Villa Reali.
Present.
Dean Middleman. Lisa Hutchinson.
Present.
And myself, Jessie Kemp, the district clerk.
Minutes of the Board of Education are going to motion in a second. The September 8th, 2020.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Are you in motion in a second for the second meeting and adoption of the policy? Number... Eighteen one thirty, eighteen one thirty mark, and forty seven sixty five.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion in a second to suspend the business meetings for the audit committee meeting. Motion?
A second. A motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, um, questions?
I do. I, um, I read through it. There was, I think, one thing that, uh, regarding passwords. I think we had that issue, uh, prior. And I'm seeing now that we're going to have a corrective action plan for that. I also drew my attention to, um, expenditures and revenues regarding our lunch program. I see that we transferred over or we were in a deficit of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars versus, uh, twenty nineteen of three hundred and five thousand dollars. I understand that, um, a good portion of that is due to COVID. Uh, I believe Eileen and I had had some conversations about doing the cons- uh... Eileen, what's the correct word I'm looking for?
Co-op, the co-op.
Good, are you?
It was a co-op, I believe.
A co-op. Um, I understand that was not the time to be considering any co-ops. But, uh, I don't think entirely the seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars was due to COVID. And I hope that maybe next year we can implement something in place or start having deeper conversations regarding a co-op.
Can I ask for that? Uh, did we get a memo?
We have to put the microphone on when you speak.
We were comparing ourselves to Sagem, who has a co-op. And from what I read today, they lost a million dollars one year. And how much the second year? Bridget?
Three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
A million dollars?
Less, yeah.
Last year. So I think we better look at something else because that doesn't appear to be working either. It's a million dollar loss.
To realize that it's a much bigger district too, so ratio comparative.
Well, it's still a loss. I, I was under the impression that you, I heard from you guys that they were making money.
What I heard was that they did some transfers out of there and then had to transfer back in from the general fund and that it wasn't a loss. So I would, maybe in the future, Mylin, we can get, um, someone from the Sagem Food Service Co-op to come down and talk to us and see exactly, and see what happened there.
I agree. Thank you.
All right.
So where did Bridget, where'd you get your information from?
Their financials.
I spoke with the business official. I spoke with the food service director at Sagem.
Okay.
And obviously their financials, which is posted on the website.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have some questions about the, well, is it, this is another budget part, right? This is the audit part? Okay. Um, so when we get to the audit part, I'll ask those questions. Um, okay, anybody else have any more questions on the audit? The corrective action plan?
No, thank you.
So I need all in favor to accept the... Oh, I need a motion in a second to accept the corrective action plan?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, I need a motion in a second to adjourn the audit committee meeting.
Please.
Sec, all in favor?
Aye.
Schedule one, resignations, terminations, and leaves of absence. I need a motion in a, in a second. Not on this one.
Motion.
On the second one. Motion, I have a motion on the table. I need a second.
Sec.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Schedule two, we are removing item four D for a separate vote. For, can I get a motion and a second for all the other items, one through, what is it through? One through five K.
Well, it's one through four C and then five, and then all of them.
Okay, one through four C and then all of five. Can I get a motion in a second for all of that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The separate vote now is number four D.
I'm looking for the clarification from Linda on that particular item.
It's the type-
Obviously divulging anything that she's not allowed to.
Okay.
Uh, we have a person who is going to be absent for a significant amount of time. Um, the people who are filling in right now are working out of title. So we are looking to put someone in who is contingent, um, for that title. If the person were to return, that, that person would go back into their job. And if that person were not to return, then, um, we would move forward with looking for a permanent replacement.
Does that person we're hiring know that it's, it's a temporary and that he might have to go back? Cause I was under the understanding.
It's a contingent position and I'm not, I'm not Mr. Cola Hefar. So I don't know exactly what that, that, but it's contingent, so.
Until I get clarification if that person knows also, I, I'd like to have a separate vote also.
We have a separate vote. So we are now voting on item four D. I need a...
I'm a no.
And a vote, that's a no.
I'm a no.
Yes. Huh? There's no motion, I need vote. So I got a no from Mark, a no from Jackie, my, Lee?
No, I think, I think, I think Jessie's correct. I think you need a motion for that one.
We're voting on it.
We're voting on it. Okay, so I need a motion in a second to vote on item four D. Okay, gotcha.
Motion. Second.
Okay, now I need to vote. No.
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Mylin?
Yes.
Eileen is a no. Okay. The next is financial matters, recommended action financial matters. I need a motion in a second. And then discussion?
Motion.
Second. Okay, so I have some discussion. This is where I wanted to, to my thing. Bridget, I've been asking this since, since you got here and probably before you got here. Uh, I'm going to tell you right now, I will not approve the budget at all, um, until I get this information so I can look at it. Part of our duties as the board is to be fiduciary, to be fiscally responsible, sorry. So I, I would like the last three years of the final appropriations report with the transfer list by the, by the item it was transferred.
Eileen, that was supplied to the board last week.
All three of them?
Yes, all three years.
For all three years?
All three years.
I did not get a transfer list.
I'll, I'll forward it again.
Okay, just send it, I want to see Jessie tomorrow.
Eileen, I saw the transfer list. It's quite lengthy.
Well, I can't print it out or I can't see it from my computer. So Jessie, if you would print it for me, I'll grab it from you.
I believe, I believe Jessie sent that home to everybody.
I saw this month's stuff in here from this agenda, but I didn't see three years from just the appropriations report, the finalized appro- uh, appropriations report.
It was delivered to your home, that's all I believe.
I, I got the whole envelope right here.
Yeah, I got-
I'll look, I'll look again, but I-
But I did not see the appropriations.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I didn't, I, I didn't see any of it and not for three years. I have the whole envelope right here. I have the general fund. I have four, I have four of them, the general funds, the, um, all the different funds. But not for the three years. And that one that I got was July through November or something, I think.
So you asked for the budget transfer, so budget transfers are different than an appropriation size?
I want the appropriations report, which lists every line and then what, what we spent and then the budget amount. The actual and the budget amount. I want that for the three years. And then each of those three years, we transferred money out of some of those lines. So I want to see that, that list as well. That's not it. I'm telling, this is not it. It's not the final one. This is from seven one twenty twenty to eleven thirty twenty twenty. I did get those. I want the three years, the full three years. I, I have it. I have that. That's not what I asked for. That's not what I've been asking for, for three years now.
All of your requests were for budget transfers for three years, but I will absolutely get you both in, in one sheet.
All right. Well, every time I asked for the appropriations, it was always, it's not finalized yet. So now they have to all be finalized, so... And that wasn't just you, Bridget, just so you know, it wasn't just you.
That's fine.
Okay.
But with previous board meetings since October, we've put up the appropriation status report for, for that. So if I go back, let me go back.
Yeah, and it's on there. I'm just asking for a printout. I'm sure it's on the website, but I want to know the finalized one.
So I wonder topic of transfers, I'm sorry, Eileen, I thought you were going to mean to-
You did. So hold on one second, Mylin, let me finish. Um, I also, with this, with the, um, audit, no, it's not the audit, I'm on the, the budget. The budget, we are doing the numbers from actual, correct? Because you have that on, on the paper. And we did talk about this at length last year. Um, where you said, that's not the one, where's my paper? I want wording added into that budget thing. Where it says, um, Connectwood Central School District Budget Development Guidelines. Um, the third paragraph, the Board of Education is committed to a proposed budget that limits the tax levy to the calculated tax levy cap for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two. The guidelines listed below are based upon anticipated state and federal aid figures. And I want something added in there that says as close to zero as possible, using actual figures by line, not budget to budget. Remember, we talked about not using a rollover budget? So I'm not going to approve this personally. I won't approve it. I don't know what my other board members will do, unless we use actual figures. I did last year. I won't do it again.
So this is on the consent agenda, so if we're going to edit it, we need to edit it now.
Okay, so that'll be on the consent agenda. It's just part of the, the money, so that's why I brought it up. And then the last thing, and then Mylin, you can have the floor. Um, there was on one of these reports, POs were issued after invoicing. Why, how does that happen? How do we get an invoice without having a PO approved by the board? That was on one of the treasurer's reports or one of those reports? Yeah. I'm sorry, Mylin, I do have one thing after that. Consent agenda, I'll talk about that one. Anybody? Why were POs issued after we got the invoice? The board has to approve things first. That means we're ordering stuff without board approval. The claims auditor report. Thank you, Jessie. There was, there was two, I've- Thank you, Jess. I don't have it in front of me. I, I do have it in front of me on my glass, though. Internal claims audit, yes. Invoice date ten twenty-six. PO date was eleven six, so a week later. Um, invoice date nine seven. A month later, ten twenty-seven was the actual PO date. PO date was ten twenty-one. And the invoice was dated May, so that's five months. So... And that one's a hundred and twenty thou- thousand dollars. How'd that happen? All right, I'm going to move on, but can you guys give me an answer for that? Cause that's, that's big, that's big money. The other ones are smaller amounts, but that's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's big money.
Isn't it not supposed to happen like that?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The board, that should-
Whether it's a little money or a lot of money, aren't we supposed to-
We're supposed to approve purchases, yes.
John, do you know what Porter Capital Corp. is? Porter Capital Corp. Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R. Okay. We'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the last question was, Ray brought this up when he was on the board, when it was just, uh, my, before Jackie was on the board, about the interest rates. And we still have not done anything about increasing the interest rates. That's, it's not a lot now, I get that, but it's still more than what we have. Why are we still using some with point oh oh three and some with point eight? Like, it doesn't make sense. Why are we not transferring money into higher interest-bearing accounts? And Ray brought that up. Know that now, two years ago? Jackie, how long you on the board?
There was definitely transferred, happened, that hap- happened. Um, Mrs. Donnelly transferred things that were a mature, that she could transfer. I don't know, uh-
I'm talking about just the checkings and savings accounts. We're not even talking about maturity dates. We're talking about regular funds that we can do anytime.
So I know that Mrs. Donnelly had done some of the work that, 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 um, Mr. Carter requested of her.
Yes, that was probably done back then. And what happened is we dropped the ball now. So what do we have to do with just, we have to stay on top of it.
Yeah, and we should be doing this constantly. This should be a constant thing to get the highest interest rate.
It adds up when you're talking about millions.
When I first started, I spoke with Metropolitan Bank and, and we did exactly that, but I'll, I'll, I'll supply it.
Okay, thank you. And that's it for me. Mylin, you're up.
Thank you, Eileen. So I noticed that there's quite a bit of tranches out of the New York State Employment Health Insurance.
Always, yes.
To various other code lines. So I was going to bring up that when I was advocating for the, uh, science table and I had the support from my board members.
Yeah.
Not four, not three, but five of my board, all five of us had wanted this table. And I had to wait over a year to get the table. And I was told, well, we can't transfer money at this code to back up to this code. But we really are taking money out of a lot of these, uh, repetitive codes to, um, put into different, uh, what's called items. So my question is, if the board wants to, um, in, in particular case, like I wanted something for the table, the board did agree, we all agreed that we pay for kids. How do, how do we put money in so that if there is something that we see, especially in technology, or something that we feel is beneficial for our kids, how do we get that incorporated into the budget so that we don't have to do a song and a dance to get something like that?
So the table was a little bit different because we did end up receiving a fifty thousand dollar grant from the, from the county to do so. So-
Yeah, and that was thanks to Linda that we got the grant because we hit roadblocks before that. So yes, I appreciate that Linda reached out to outside sources to get that money. If she didn't, I still probably wouldn't have that table.
So Mylin, what you're talking about is equipment. And the lines, you cannot transfer into equipment codes. So, you know, what you're saying is, you know, if you wanted to look at something moving forward as a board to earmark money for a special project in the future and you wanted to access equipment, you would earmark that money in a curriculum equipment code. Um, because you can't transfer between other codes into equipment and you're not supposed to transfer between, um, other, uh, functions into equipment. So for example, you, you're really by general municipal law, not allowed to transfer from equipment for maintenance into equipment for curriculum. So if we decided not to purchase a lawn mower and we decided we wanted to purchase something in our curriculum, you're really not legally allowed to do that. So really what you're asking is, would you want to put money in a code that was curriculum equipment, just in case something came up in the future? That's where the board would most likely put that money.
I, 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 I understand that piece, Linda, but there is, um, New York State Health Employment, it goes to quite a bit of different things here. You know, we even, I think they even pay a salary out of this. We pull that, we transfer money out of this to pay a salary. So I, I mean, I guess-
Yeah, but the very specific municipal law is about equipment.
Yeah, chairman, chairman retro. You know, so we're pulling out of health insurance-
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to know.
To pay for certain things, we, uh, reimbursements and other things, special education on both these. So, so it seems to me that that code has a lot of, uh, play where other codes don't. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, so as you know, every single year, there's contingencies built into the budget and that's one of the codes where the contingencies are built in for things that we have to pay. So if there are contracts that have retro or some other language that we have to pay out money from, yes, it's going to be above and beyond what those individual, you know, budget codes are, are budgeted for. So we will have to transfer from one account into another to be able to pay out those, those certain items.
So again, it, it's fluid to certain things. So is that a cap, fluid to certain items or is it fluid to everything? And only other ca- accounts are, are restricted?
You can transfer out of an equipment code is, is what Dr. Adams explained, but you cannot transfer into an equipment code. But payroll, yes, certainly, you know, as contracts change, as additional staff, especially with COVID, you know, we had to hire so many more individuals to be able to, uh, run and operate a school district. Yes, uh, but we're also mandated and we have to make sure we're, uh, going through general municipal law and many other things that hold us accountable.
Okay, so now that we're sort of moving into technology world, we've been doing it for quite a while. So is it that we could put a little bit in there so that if the board or the administration sees something that'd be beneficial to our staff and children, will they have some movement there?
Transfer out of, but not into, is that what you're saying, Mylin?
Correct, thank you, Eileen.
Really, the, the fund that has the most laws around it is equipment. So if the board wanted to put, let, uh, I'm just using a round number. If the board wanted to put a hundred thousand dollars in a curriculum equipment code, that could be transferred out into just about anywhere else. But no monies can be transferred into-
No, I think what Mylin is asking is when we do the budget this year.
Mm-hmm.
Can we put the contingency in the equipment code now so that we don't have this problem if Mylin finds another table or, or Lee finds or Jackie finds something else?
I just explained that. The board would, could put a hundred thousand dollars into curriculum equipment. And then if you decide you want to do something in technology or you can-
We can transfer out. Okay, sorry, misunderstood you. Okay, good. So Mylin, we could, we could work on that when we do the budget as well.
Thank you, Eileen.
You're welcome. Um, okay, so that's, uh, what are we up to now? Consent agenda? Oh, from the financial matters. Anybody else have any questions on the financial matters? No? I need a, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Lee? Oh, well, I can hear you, microphone on. All right, um, I need a, uh, motion and a second for the consent agenda and then discussion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are, um, I would like to table item number five. I have a couple of questions here.
Eileen, you said all in favor. We, we didn't discuss.
Oh, sorry. I meant, that was to discuss, not to, how do I take that back? I take it back! I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the consent agenda for discussion? Second? Okay, now we can discuss, right? Okay, so, um, the budget guidelines we just talked about. Uh, I want that wording added in.
Can you be more specific, please?
Um... No, I can't. I'll, I'll give you what, what I'm saying is, I want the budget, we're at a hundred and ninety-nine million dollars right now. And we have a lot of cushion in there and I'm, I said this last year, I want it done by line by line, not budget to budget. So if that's not possible and you guys continue to do the cushion, then I want the tax levy to be as close to zero as possible. And again, but using the actual figures. Otherwise, I personally am telling you right now, to the entire public, I will not vote for that budget and we can go to contingency. Because a hundred and ninety-nine million dollars, if we have all this money to transfer all over the place, my taxpayers shouldn't have to pay all that much money. So I want, I want that looked at very carefully this year. That's all, that's just my comment there. Okay, that's the budget. Um, number four, U.S. Medical Staffing Agreement. What the heck is that?
Substitute nurses.
What is it?
Substitute nurses and other medical professionals if we were to need them.
Okay, but don't we have nurses?
If we need a substitute nurse, because we don't have a, a nurse to cover, we could go to this service.
That's all it is?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, the cost of these, is that in line with what we pay our actual nurses?
I, I would assume that our nurses make more per hour, but I have not done that analysis.
Okay, cause we also have, I mean, they have, we have to do the training. Do we, we have to pay for the training, it says in this contract? I mean, that's going to cost us money. Um, a plan to test the school students and teachers for the COVID-nineteen. I mean, that, that has to go through the, the parents. The school, we have to have a school medical director. I mean, we have to take another position now? That's going to cost us money?
We have that. We have a school medical director.
We have one?
Yes, we have Dr. Gill.
Okay. Oh, that's, okay, that's just a doctor, that's what they call? Okay, but then it also says, um, that we have to have an adequate number of certified staff available to the school to collect nasal samples. I mean, it's all about COVID and it's all, to me, I'm seeing dollars, dollars ringing up on the register big time. Why are we doing this program? You're saying it's substitute nurses, but it's telling me-
Are you speaking about the U.S. Medical Staffing Agreement?
Yeah.
These are consultants that would come in if we want them to come in. Um, and the rates are fifty-five dollars an hour for an RN.
Plus, we have to have insurance, plus, we have to do this. But, did you read this thing?
You're, you're actually not talking about that. You're talking about the MOA from the Suffolk County Department of-
I'm looking at it right here. Oh, I have two of them. I'm looking at the COVID-nineteen. You're right.
I was, I was wondering what you were doing.
Sorry, My-
I was wondering about that too.
The COVID-nineteen one, I'll go back to that one. The medical staffing, you're saying that's just the nurses.
This is if we need subs.
Okay, that, we can move on. The next one was the Gersio and Gersio. That's on, I, I'd like to make a motion to table that item. A second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Lee? No, you don't want to table it? Okay, well, it's tabled because we got one. Um, the COVID testing, let's go back to that. There's this whole agreement that they want us to sign. And I'm telling you, I see the cats are just going ding 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 ding.
So if the school district ever needs to test because the surrounding area, because we're directed to test by the state or the governor, we cannot access free COVID tests from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services without it, and bring it to an MOA. I'm sorry.
Didn't River, is it Riverhead the testing site and they, they're doing it right now for free?
Wait, Jackie.
Through Balone's office?
So, so-
So this is if we're directed, you're telling me?
If we're directed, we need to have had this MOA in place in order for us to access.
Well, until we're directed, I don't want to do this. This is a lot of money. You're talking about every single paragraph is costing money.
There, there should be no money. It's really more about-
It says we have to buy insurance. We have to have, we already violate HIPAA all the time. Um, we have to have secure and temperature-controlled test card storage plans. I mean, all these things are going to cost us money to put them in place. Everything in here.
I, I believe that's actually the Suffolk County Department of Health that has-
Well, it's not saying that in this thing. I'd like to make a motion to table this as well until the lawyer's over.
No, so we looked it over. If I can make a comment.
Wait, wait, Lisa's on, Lisa's speaking.
Just to make a comment, we looked, Linda did send it to us. We looked it over. We are, everybody got this in Suffolk County, all the schools. So what we're trying to do is to see if we can negotiate with Suffolk County to make it, to push back on some of the obligations to the school districts. We may or may not be successful. So if you want to wait till your next meeting, just after we have a conversation with them on behalf of-
Yeah.
More districts, you can certainly do that.
So then that's what I would like to do. I would like to make a motion to table this as well until the lawyer has tried to negotiate with Suffolk County.
Is this, uh, just from trying to figure, is this what they're doing out east?
Yes.
Yes, this is so- There is a school district that Riverhead is doing it already. And they had to sign this. But I thought that, what, what I'm saying is, didn't Balone's office pay for that?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know who paid for it. I, to be honest with you, I'm- Suffolk County, didn't Suffolk County pay for it as a testing site?
So there were multiple testing sites before we, oh, before the vacation. East Islip, Riverhead, Copeg, um, uh, East Hampton, I mean, Hampton Bays. They had to enter into this agreement with-
They had to enter into this agreement with the Suffolk County Department of Health because the Suffolk County Department of Health provided all the tests. And in most sites, the Suffolk County Department of Health also provided the majority of the nurses. And that's what this is about. If we were to be mandated to test, we would not be able to access those services or those tests without this MOA.
But this, but we can't get what they have.
Also insurance.
They're pushing a lot of.
The biggest issue with that is that there, if there's multiple places going on at the same time, it'd be likely to be our own nurses testing and not Suffolk County Department of Health, they would oversee it.
All right, so.
So Linda, I have this one question for you. Who is the school medical director?
Dr. Gill.
Okay, so Lisa, I guess this would apply to you. On the section two, item E. So it says, training for the appropriate staff for dramatic testing demonstration of competency to implement, sorry, implementation of the school district rapid testing program. So I did ask my daughter-in-law, how many people come into her building? Her building is to be equivalent in size to charity. She's saying that it's three staff, so it's one person that takes the information, another person that does something, and it's the actual person that administers the test. So I would assume that that would be, and she said that they come to the building once a week. Those three staff come to the building once a week. So when I was looking at this, I was thinking to myself, so what is, so I guess on the north and south side, you have a set of people that come because you have to go five days a week to visit the five buildings, you go on the other side. There's another staff, you know, another set of staff that goes like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. That's how New York City, at least that's how they're doing it. In her building, they come in once a week. In her, in her building, they're doing, I believe it's ten percent of the school and staff. Is that correct, Linda? Is that what they're looking to do, about ten percent?
Actually, Mylin, they haven't, they haven't given us the guidelines, you know, when Governor Cuomo spoke last week about if the surrounding community went above nine percent, the school district would begin, need to test in order to stay in person. We have still yet to see what those guidelines are. So I couldn't tell you how many times we would visit different places. Because without those guidelines, we don't actually know how many people would need to be tested. So, but we can't test at all if we don't have this MOA, and that's why the MOA is on here. And then the consequence to that.
I am in favor of doing it. I know that there's long lines. I think it's a definitely a convenience for parents, for their students, you know, for their children to be tested. So I'm not against it. I definitely see the benefits to this. The other question I have too.
Mylin, the only thing I'm asking to do is table it until the lawyers can maybe push back and make sure that we don't have to, the burden of all these costs are not on the school districts. So until the next meeting, that's what I'm asking to table it for.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay.
You know, I just want to list off my questions for Lisa. So Lisa, my other question would be, so say if Johnny, say if the parent of Johnny does not want Johnny to get tested, what happens? Because I don't see that being reflected in.
There's no.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a, that's a separate guideline. So this is really just so that the district can do the testing. If Johnny doesn't want to be tested, likely Johnny eventually would not be able to attend school. They would have to be on remote instructions, likely.
In New York City as well.
We don't know.
Lisa, I'm sorry, one last question. On part three, item B, is it possible that you could get the board of education, board of certification on that language?
Yeah, that's another thing. There's an appeal or?
The indemnification and defense clause you're talking about? That's the, that's the piece that we want to speak with Suffolk County about. So typically, in these types of agreements, you have what they call reciprocal indemnification and defense. It's understandable why Suffolk County doesn't want to do it, but that's a conversation.
They got money because they don't have it.
Well, that's a conversation we want to have.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to table this until the next meeting after Lisa reports back to us. Do you have a second? All in favor? Aye. Let's table this. Okay, the next thing is the Corona, oh, the resolution. Lisa, did you write this thing, this resolution for this coronavirus? Whereas on March 11, 2020, the World Health Organization declared coronavirus disease 2019 a pandemic? Did you write this thing?
No.
Okay, so.
Are you referring to item number seven?
Yes, I am. So some of the language in here. First of all, I want you to look it over before I, before I'll say yes, so I want to table this as well. Because there was one line, and I have to find it again, that the board authorizes the district superintendent or his or her designee to take the necessary legal step to purchase equipment, supplies, and other, I'm giving an open checkbook.
Let me look at this. I'm not sure. Is this from Bridget? Is this the one we provided back in March earlier?
I'm pretty sure, yes.
Yes, so we might have, we probably did do this, this is a repeat of what we had supplied.
This is same gun.
It's not an open.
For COVID, you're going to spend it without even asking the board.
It's not an open checkbook.
That's what that language sounds like.
For example, John and facilities really need gloves. We're limited in the bids that we can access to be able to get those gloves because a lot of companies are sold out and this resolution allows us to access those bits.
I understand what you're saying, but Lisa, the language is not that tight.
I believe this is the language that we provided before, but if you're looking to limit this so that there is definitive board approval.
Yeah, I mean, it can't just, it could be a hundred twenty thousand dollars and we don't know about it.
So if you're looking to get this done now, I can make, I can make some changes to this so that you can reconsider it before the end of the meeting?
I'm leaving after this one, so.
So you're, the board is meeting in two weeks?
I didn't figure I'd leave. I take the language on this.
Okay, so.
Can we do it by the next meeting?
Yes, we could definitely do it.
Okay, so I need a motion. I'm going to motion to table this as well. I need a second.
Motion.
Yeah, I need a second, Mylin. I motion. You second?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. And that's all I have on the consent agenda. Does anyone else have any other questions on the consent agenda? The only other thing I have, John, is the bids for the KLH. We only got one. Not real happy about that. I'm going to let it slide right now. Anybody else?
Yes, I just have one question and actually just going through it to my head. I draw, I don't know the twelve resolutions, participate in South Hampton, library supplies of versions. Could someone just elaborate on that?
That's just so we can buy more stuff with the more purchasing power, right, Bridget? Yes? Yes, okay. That's like our normal.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So, so now that topic came up, where are we, where are elementary libraries?
As far as moving forward with the capital work, Mylin, is that what you're asking?
Correct.
You're going to get me on this one. I will get you a memo tomorrow with which two. We have four libraries that are at the state. Two of them got approved out of order. That's why I don't remember the exact ones that were approved. We have not developed the bids for that, so we have not solicited any prices. So that's why the Board of Education has not seen anything relative to the elementary libraries at this point.
So what is on your, what is, I know that you created a timeline. Are we behind the timeline because of the COVID and are we still sticking to our projected timelines and completion of these projects?
Mylin and John, can you just hold on one second? Mylin, can you do that during discussion? Because I have to go get, I have to leave. I have to leave, so I wanted to vote on the consent agenda. And then you have discussion items, and this is a discussion item?
Okay.
Would you do that for me, please? Thank you. So I need a motion, thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor? Aye. Thank you all. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mark, and I'm sorry that I have to go, but I do have to leave tonight. Thank you. Now you're up to new discussion, Mark. Now you get back to that, Mylin.
All right, feel better, Eileen.
I'm sorry, Mr. Warsaw.
All right.
We asked two, two folks have appointments to speak with you guys. We gave them eight thirty and eight thirty-five. And they've been sitting here the whole night, so could we actually allow the public?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I won't be able to listen, but I'll watch it on YouTube.
So we'll go to public comment. We'll let the two speakers that want to come up. I don't know who's first, which, come right up.
Again, I apologize. Thank you for coming to speak. Sorry about that.
No worries. Eileen, please turn your mic off though, please. Thank you.
I'm staying. Go ahead, you can go. It's public comment. You have the three minutes. Address the board and we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. So I first just wanted to take this minute to say thank you to Dr. Adams and all the parties involved in keeping our district open and in person when we safely can. Other districts have chosen remote learning and at times chose to keep the schools closed rather than in person before and after school's breaks. I'm extremely grateful for us being open and I know we are in hard and scary times. My husband is a first responder. My cousin, who is pregnant, is a nurse on a COVID patient floor in a hospital. So I understand the fears that people have with going out of their homes to work. So a big and huge thank you to all the teachers, therapists, and staff who give a hundred percent to our children every day. I really appreciate all of you and I just wanted to state that. My son has been in the district almost three years now. He spent two years in the CAPS program where the CPSC coordinators, psychologists, teachers, therapists, and staff were truly a blessing. Communication was easy and all my concerns as a parent with her first child requiring services were met. This year, my son is in a new building for kindergarten. His teacher and aide give a hundred and ten percent every day and are exceptional educators. His therapists work well and diligently with him and improvement has been made in those areas since September. I come to you tonight with unfortunately having an issue with the administration in the building. From day one, a kindergarten orientation, I was made to feel different.
Can I, we're really not supposed to talk about an administrative by name?
I didn't say name.
I know, but we know the building.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Okay, so.
Just try to leave out the name of the building, whatever, just so you have a problem in the district.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Thank you. So at orientation, myself and two other parents waited outside for the cars with corresponding class that we were supposed to have the time with to go into kindergarten orientation. The security guard came out, took one class and told us to wait. Myself and the other parents were outside for ten minutes before the teacher came to get us and apologized. We should have been sitting in on the orientation before it was given. The teacher took us to our room and assured we would be addressed and that never happened. We were never sought out. So the teacher then had to go get the individual to speak with us and answer our questions. So I felt a disconnect right there where I was being kind of left out and felt different, that I wasn't included. And there my son is, seeing all the other students sitting with their parents and not being, they're being included in this speech and I'm standing on the side. So following that, the past several weeks, basically right after Thanksgiving break, I was checking my son's notebook for his services and he hadn't received anything in this specific service since December third. I let time go by because I know the situation's going on and I know how difficult staffing is and rumors were spreading that certain areas were out and had to quarantine, whatever the case may be. So I had to reach out to Dr. Adams and the interim special ed director. Both responded to me in a very short amount of time, but my point was my son had missed ten sessions at this time. I don't blame the therapist at all, COVID or not, people are allowed to take their sick time. Things happen, life happens. I totally get it. We're not here. But it took for me three to four weeks that I had to go to my son's teacher and then have to reach out to Dr. Adams and reach out to Dr. Hansi Amantis before someone actually responded to me what was going on. So my concern is, I would like to know going forward that communication in that building or will be, in any building, is there for the parents. I'm not saying after a day or two that my son missed services, but at least two weeks I should have been notified about what was going on. And I just want to know too that my son's well-being is, and his heart is at best interest there. Because right now I don't feel that way and I kind of feel a little ostracized. And I know, I just don't want parents to feel that way. I'm on the SEPTA board member. I'm one of the SEPTA members with Jill. And our goal is to make sure parents advocate for their child and not to feel bullied or that repercussions are going to come. So I just want to make sure that going forward, communication will be there for all parents, special needs or not. So that's just what I wanted to bring forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm actually going to piggyback on that a little bit. In my eight years in this district, I've met some pretty amazing people. My son went to the middle school and the high school. My daughter is enrolled in the special education program at one of the elementary schools. To say we have an amazing team of people working here at ConnectQuot would be an understatement. The value and the wisdom they bring to our community is imperative to our children's educational experience. I know personally, I appreciate the teachers that have made a difference in both my children's lives. That being said, it truly breaks my heart because I don't know if everybody is aware, but we have a major problem in our district. Parents like Nicole that have opened up and spoken out are getting private messages to be careful. Be careful where you tread. Be careful who you speak out against. I keep hearing a number from multiple people I have spoken to, ninety to ninety-five percent. Ninety to ninety-five percent of our teachers in this district are absolutely amazing. I know personally, I've never really had a problem with teachers. They're all astounding. I can't even, words can't describe our staff here. That other five to ten percent chastises parents for speaking out. And when it comes to special education, there is not only laws that protect our children, there's actually laws that protect parents who advocate for their kids. So I don't know if everybody is aware of it. I don't know if they're aware of those laws. But the more I'm having special education parents come to me as a president of SEPTA, I've only been doing this. I've had other things I've advocated for in this district. I've gotten warnings. I have never gotten warnings like this. And I have said it plenty of time at board meetings, God help the person that comes after my child. I'm a big mouth. I speak out. There are parents that are coming to me that are scared to speak out about their kids not getting services. They are scared to say, well, this IEP wasn't followed or this 504 wasn't followed. Those are laws and those are laws that are there on the books for a reason because of that, that right there. Somebody might not feel that those accommodations are necessary or they might not want to do them, but they are there for a reason and they have to be followed. And if a parent speaks out, especially a special education parent, there are laws protecting us as well. So if parents want to come and speak out at meetings, they want to. The problem is, is they get private messages, just like I did, just like Nicole did, telling you not to. That is a major issue for general education. But special education, there's actual whistleblowers laws that protect us as parents. So I don't know what needs to get done. I don't know where the problem lies. All I know is that for ninety-five percent, ninety, ninety-five is the number I get told from plenty of people I've talked to about this, our teachers are absolutely amazing. Then there is this small percentage that are smearing us in the news, in other districts, and now our parents are afraid to speak up. That's not okay.
Who is smearing you? I don't understand.
I have plenty of educators in other school districts that are administrative, that work with special needs. I work with a lot of advocates for special education on Long Island. We do not look good when it comes to a very small percentage of our teaching population. And I've never interacted with them. But it makes me wonder, is my, now there's parents that say, well, my son never had this issue. And is it because I spoke out now in the last year? My daughter never had this problem. Is it because I made a problem about her IEP? You can't have that.
I want you to hear me on this.
You have a word that we're going to look into it because I think I can say for everybody, this is something that I emailed Linda and I emailed, I think, the board. It was the whole board. I emailed the whole board the other day because I got several messages about this. So I know what you were talking about. I didn't understand it first, but now I understand. And it's the same thing. I got the messages. I forwarded it to Linda and the board. This is what I was talking about earlier. And we made it very clear that that won't happen anymore. There is not to be bullying of parents. No parent should ever be afraid to come forward. And any parent, and I do mean any parent, can call me at any time, any time. I know, I said, they shouldn't be calling me. They should be calling their building principal. But I will never turn a parent away. I am a parent in the district. I will never, ever turn a parent away. No child will be bullied by an adult at all. And if they are, you bring it to us. Because there is a problem when adults, any adult, and I'm not saying anyone did because I don't know, we're going to see. But nobody is, we're not supposed to be telling people bullying, no bullying and bullying isn't okay, but it's okay to scare parents and to not speak. For many years I spoke up. I will still speak up. I will speak up for you. Just let me know.
I'm going to follow up with.
I'm going to follow up with, with, with Mrs. Napal Tanoferno. If you're, if you're not comfortable in calling me and I call people back, I email people back, or I get the person that's going to solve the problem to get back to those people as quickly as possible. If you're not comfortable calling me, you call one of the board members, they will call me and we will figure out who is going to solve the problem. It's unacceptable, it's absolutely unacceptable. It's not acceptable.
Not acceptable.
Yep.
Especially if the teacher that's advocating for something that a child leaves and they don't want to go against this small population, then something needs to be done about that small population. Because he is an amazing, amazing teacher.
We do, absolutely do. So I'm going to call you tomorrow and we're going to chat, okay?
And Linda, I'm going to give Linda credit right here. Linda and the interim special education director did, after I emailed, did get on top of this and my understanding is it was hands on.
Yes. She is awesome. Yeah, hopefully we're hiring an awesome one as well.
Sorry for the misfortune, uh, we'll move on, we're going to go back to um, new business discussion items for the Board of Education and topics. I'm going to say something that I went to the Winter Wonderland, had a good time. I think you guys did a great job on it, I don't know who the head of it was, I know Mr. Moran, he had something to do with it. But it was really a beautiful program, if you got a chance to go down there. Anybody, if you saw it, you would be excited about what our school district did for the kids and for the parents and we tried to make the best of a situation for this Christmas that happened. Um, if anybody else has something to bring up, I know we were talking about something before.
I wanted to get, let the administrators talk so that we can get that done, yes, questions and answers.
Yeah, that's, well, that's why I'm going to go back to what I mean said, that John Allen was discussing with.
I wanted to let the high school administration so that they can, they could hit the road too.
You want them to talk?
Yeah.
You want them to leave?
No, I want them to talk.
Okay, go ahead. Who do you want to talk first?
Let Mr. Moran come up.
Hello, Mr. Moran, come on up.
I'll follow up, but you guys did an excellent job at Winter Wonderland, the PTA did an excellent job, your administrators, the children, great time. Thank you for doing that.
It was all pleasure.
Security, you did a great job, everybody did a great job, appreciate it. The kids, they liked, they had a lot of fun, glad to see it. We've had some questions, well, I have some questions uh, for the high school. There's been a lot of um, conversation, a lot of numbers, Dean, Dean sent us the numbers, right? Okay. We tried to find out, and me and my Lynn spoke a little bit about it. Yeah, I just want to find out what is going on, what is being done to make sure our seniors are successful. The numbers, they're not looking good for graduation. Um, I have a whole list of questions to ask in regards to that, in regards to the credit policy, uh, why it hasn't been suspended and where are you with the revisions? And what, what are we doing to try to make sure that all these children get to walk? I mean, I don't want to wait until, like, two years ago. I don't want to wait until a week before, a day before, three days before to hear we have this many in a population that are failing. Um, the numbers don't look good right now in hopes that there's some kind of path that we're looking for to help these kids get on the right track, to help them especially during this challenging year. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm going to bring all that up, I'm going to, I was going to ask one at a time, you want me to ask all?
I'll start.
One at a time is good, they're, they're in different places, so the seniors asking for success, that's, that's a huge start.
So just go one at a time.
Yep.
I showed Linda the questions, so I wanted to make sure, I tried to keep them as best as I could, but parents were, were, you know, that I spoke to, they had told me a couple of different things and I just wanted to hit it up with you to see what you guys.
I can still uh, speak about the seniors. I called every senior that has failed even one class, if it's a class needed to graduate. I spoke to every parent. Kids that failed more than one class, I called all of them as well, even if it was two classes that weren't needed for graduation. I spoke to the parents, if they told me, you know, it was a particular problem with the class, I emailed the teacher. A lot of, if the work was handed in, because if they're looking on the parent portal, the work might not have been reflected. So I emailed the teachers after I spoke to the parents. So every parent has been spoken to for every senior that failed at least one class and every parent's been spoken to for a senior that has failed more than one class, even if they're not required to graduate. And when I say spoken to, I at least left a message for every parent, I did not get everyone.
Okay, yeah, because the, because the situation was, I guess, a few days ago, parents were told that some children wouldn't, wouldn't graduate or would have to sit in front of a committee or something along that line.
That is the uh, go ahead.
And they hadn't spoken to anybody, they hadn't spoken to anybody.
I've called failures, that's a letter for attendance.
No, I understand, but there's kids that are failing that did not get a phone call. I mean, I'm just telling you what I got from parents and, and then they got, they, they reached out, they had to reach out.
Any senior that, you can call me tomorrow, any senior that is failing, I, I did call, so.
Okay, and are we making sure that every senior, whether it is health class, whether it is gym, whether it is math, whatever it is, we're making sure we're giving them an opportunity right now.
Of course.
To make up that class, then no parent is being told that they are going to have to, you know, sit in front of a committee in June, no, no person's being told that.
Letters have gone out for attendance, I'm talking about kids that have failed classes and for any classes and the health and the phys ed, all of them.
That's another issue, like attendance. How are we doing attendance if the first month and the second month, we ended up having all sorts of technical issues and really, we, we failed and not for giving technology out to this district in a timely fashion, that's on us. And I'll own that as one of the board members. But at the end of the day, there are still children that we're saying in September, when there was all sorts of new, kids are using their cell phones, there's all sorts of new issues, whether they were losing their wifi, they were logging in a few minutes late. I know I reached out to Linda a few times and she even said that they were going to look into a possible, some, some other button that you could push to make, to show you came on late, but that you were still in attendance. I don't know if that, that ended up happening or what, with the kids that ended up going on. I said if they lost connection or they, they were marked absent. Okay, parent, I've spoken where parents have said that they called attendance, it still didn't matter, they were still marked absent. So I'm just trying to find out with six months to go, okay, we should have no parent, we, we should have no parent that, that thinks their child's going to fail, because we have six months. Six months to make sure their child is successful, right? I mean, that, that's, that's what we're all here to do, we're here to help kids. So if that's, that's what I want to make sure that we're, we're going in that direction. Because any parent that thinks right now, I got to go in front of a committee in June or I got to go in front of the Board of Ed, I'm telling you here and now, my one voice, my one vote is going to be to let kids walk this year, especially with what's going on. If, if I'm being told that unless it's some extreme case of disrespect to an adult, that's a whole different ball of wax. But if you're telling me that a kid is just having issues because they got to use their cellphone and they can't get on or they go on virtual because the numbers are higher or some kids remote, they just can't do. It's just very difficult for some children. If that's the case and these kids are, you know, and any issue, that becomes an issue.
This is the uh, attendance policy, I don't know if you...
I have a whole list of questions, you can go next.
Wait, I just want to hold on for one second.
Go ahead.
This attendance policy, I don't know if you have it, Mark, do you have copies to hand out?
I think it's important as we hand this out, what needs to be said is the two are really two different items. We have one that holds under the Commission of Regulation 104.1 that the board every year, which actually would dot our attendance policy after it's reviewed by committee. This comes out of there, this is what the attendance policy is, it's specially specific letters that have to go out at different times of the year based on people's absences. Specifically, you know, when it's due to reaches, you can see that both in the banking sector, it's five, a 15 and 20 uh, letter. Then there's a different set of protocols that come up, but we're talking specifically about the credit policy. And then uh, when we start talking about the credit policy, that's uh, when we begin to get into discussions at the end of the year about the appeals committee. And I think everybody needs to uh, be able to see more clearly with a clearer lens how that process works, because it's not there and it's not designed to hurt students. It's there to take into account the mitigating issues that might come up there in the year. Then they happen, I mean, certainly during a pandemic, we're going to run into much of this. And we're all sensitive, that families are going through personal, not to mention what our faculty and staff and capital, so first things day. But um...
Well, well, the issue I think is, because I know you're, I'm going to use a, for instance, for instance. Here, in the past, physical education absences were able to be made up in the morning before school and before the end of the quarter. Why can't these absences be made up virtually? So here's, here's a question, if I have a child, and I'm just giving you a, a general, if I have a kid that's failing gym, gym or health or something along those lines, why can't I get, why can't I take another, now I'm, into January, why can't I take another half a credit of that? To try to pass if I'm failing, why would I have to wait till June to have to? I just, I don't understand, like, some of these, I know what you're saying, but then there are some options where we have a lot of seniors who are, who, who have only four classes, okay, they're four classes, right? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at what they send me, it looks like they have four classes, some kids. Okay, so what I'm asking, so if you have what I'm saying to you is, so if we had to add a half a credit of whatever it is, home ec, I don't, you know, I'm just using gym because it's, you know, if you... It's a graduation, you know, so if that's it, are we going to tell a kid that they can't walk on graduation day or that they're going to have to go in front of a committee when right now we can find a solution instead of an excuse? We can find a solution and say, hey, let's give this child another opportunity and then it's on the child. Then we actually gave the kid an opportunity, you know, you didn't pass it this first, whatever it is, when that, guess what, now we're giving you another opportunity, what was your excuse? Now he has a solution for you, it's on you to make it work.
We spoke to Mr. Malory today, actually, just to give the students an opportunity to make up the classes, so there isn't going to be the situation described and where they have to wait till June to know if they're getting the phys ed credit. And he was fine with the students making up.
Oh, great, okay, good, well, that's good to know, because I'm going to let a couple of parents know, because I know that they were, a few parents were, were not told that about a couple of different things.
Well, we wanted to check with the AD and he was fine with that.
Okay.
So.
And here's another one, how can parents access their child's daily attendance period by period to ensure the student is in attendance virtually for each class? Working parents need a way to check on their children if they are not at home with them, especially in high school, being that they're teenagers, some of them sleep in, their alarms don't go off, they're kids. We all know, some kids are more motivated than others.
How can we check the period by period attendance? We have period.
No, but as a parent though, how can the parents access it? Well, I'm being told that, that the parents can't access their child's daily attendance period by period to ensure the students in class. Thank you, let's see, we have to...
So, just before we go on, you know, there have been some changes with regards to attendance for New York State. Um, and we have recently met with all of our administrators um, at the secondary level to revise some of the coding for uh, for that and, and that just came out from New York State recently. This has been a very fluid year with regards to attendance because of, of the numerous challenges that we have never faced as a school district before. Having students who are virtual, who are, their cameras on, their cameras off, they're logging in late, they're logging in on time and all these different reasons why. We have tried to create as many different codes as possible to make that, um, to make the understanding of, of the student attendance um, clear. Uh, but, but it is a fluid process, um, you know, so we have guidance that's going out to our teaching staff um, with some revisions about the coding of attendance, as well as we have uh, two of our middle school administrators who are putting together a committee, I'm meeting with them actually tomorrow. Um, uh, basically it's an online expectations committee and they're putting together with uh, several teachers from each of the levels to talk about what the expectations are for students, um, what present means and, and all those different things to kind of gauge, you know, that online engagement component um, of attendance. So, so those are things that are all within the process that are currently going on.
Okay.
And um, you know, they, you know, the high school has been um, working with their staff to try to make sure and their attendance protocols, you know, it, it's just a challenge this year and it's something we've never faced, so, you know, we have been, it has been very fluid. You know, Ms. Moran did send me the revisions of the uh, credit policy, um, which he shared with you this evening, which, you know, the plan was to, to share it tonight, so.
The issue isn't, I don't think the issue is with a lot of parents, I don't think the issue is that they don't understand that, you know, these are, a lot of this is a work in progress. I think the issue is, is that they're, some of them are being told one thing, some of them aren't getting the answers and the ones that are getting the answers aren't getting the answers that are factual, because I'm getting the factual answers right from, right from them, that's why I wanted them to speak to them as opposed to... Right, no, no, I understand, but, but I'm saying, and no disrespect, I'm saying it's, I don't think anyone really understands. A lot of the parents are confused by a lot of the things that have been going on and now they're being told, hey, my, my kid might fail or, or, you know, your kid was absent all these times. Meanwhile, we as the district have been responsible for giving lack of technology. We had, we had lack of, of a lot of different things the first month. I mean, I even have a question here like this, how can students be held accountable for the beginning of the year latenesses and or absences when there were many technical issues either from students at home, either from the attendance department along with lack of teaching staff or training for protocols involving attendance and virtual learning? It's not, it's not against anyone, it's we were all going through the same challenging time. How are we holding the students more accountable than we're holding the, the adults? It doesn't make sense to me.
But I think that's what the high school has been addressing and, you know, I, I'm sure Mr. Moran will be able to, to articulate that.
But this is what I'm saying to you, but, but the parents that I spoke to are telling me that their children, and this was saying, children in general, a bunch of them, if they miss, if they have absences, they're going to lose credit. So my thing is, let's suspend the, I said, let's suspend the credit policy, let's also give them another, another chance to, to, to get whatever it is fixed now. There's no reason why we should be telling parents that their students are failing and they're not going to be graduating and that their only option, and this is, this has been done, their only option is to speak to a committee in June. That is unacceptable. For, for students especially, like, they're going through enough anxiety, enough stress and now we're going to tell a senior, this is like, we thought last year was the worst senior year. No way, this is by far, this is, there's nothing, there's nothing special other than these little things that we're trying and I appreciate, like the Winter Wonderland, but really, this is not the norm of any school year for any of, anybody's kid. We, we have to be a little more lenient, I think.
Does everybody have this form, we should have uh, it should have read on it as well, do you have that Jackie? Didn't you just pass that out, Mark? It says, high school attendance policy updated January 11th, 2021. All right, so if you take a look at the high school attendance, Mark, did they have the old one as well? All right, for comparison's sake, you can look at the old attendance policy. So this one has been updated, when we came to the last board meeting, the board asked that we updated and make some changes to the attendance policy and the credit policy. So I'm not going to go through it line by line, you know, but if you look in red, those are the changes that have been made. So some of it is just verbiage, the way it was written, it's clearer. I will spend more time talking about the changes that affect the students. So like five day consecutive absences on that bullet on the bottom, possible interventions, meeting with student, phone call to parents, letter to parents, assigned student to meet with guidance council or YFS. That was added in to get the YFS workers involved for students who've been out five consecutive days. That will be at the assistant principal's discretion after he investigates why a student or she uh, had been out five consecutive days. Same things under the 15 days. So same possible interventions, like I said, if you have the older policy, some of those are, we changed some of the wording just to make it clearer for everybody to understand. Uh, if you go to 20 consecutive full days, that was all changed as well. General education students, and we showed the difference between the special ed students and the general education students, adding in the director of PPS, director of special ed, to get them involved in the five day consecutives. We also made a change that now for the attendance policy, that's going to be handled by the grade level office and the grade level, so the grade level office secretaries will generate the letter and it'll be sent out under the assistant principal's name. So for the attendance, that's going to go for Mr. Sidman, Ms. Lox and Ms. Goodwin. And then when you get to the attendance, uh, the credit policy, that will be Ms. Goodwin's office, so it's been split. That will be Ms. Goodwin's office. So it's been split. So.
Wait, I wanna ask you something. So I, I had told the Linda left, um, I had a, I had a question that actually may have went right into that. It was in regards to, we don't wanna ask him something. But what I wanna ask him, because it's gonna go right into it, otherwise I'm gonna forget. Sorry about that. I just wanna get so that you actually. It was the one where are we having, is each? Is each administrator dealing with their own grade level's credit policy?
Attendance policy. So each grade level, they're all going to take care of. So when a student.
So originally though, did they, was it one administrator? Because Linda told us one administrator was gonna do it.
Originally.
He said we wanted all, everybody to have their own.
Originally it was one. We split it now. So. Ms. Goodwin was going to do the high school attendance policy and the credit policy. That's what we did in last year and the year before with the dean. We split that now. So they will take care of the attendance, so.
No, but I mean by, is it going grade by grade? Like is she, okay, what is, what is she in charge of? What grade?
Ninth grade.
But is she in charge of all, but it, okay, so now she's only doing ninth grade attendance and credit?
No, she's only doing ninth grade attendance and she's doing the credit policy for all four grades. She is not taking care of regular attendance for the tenth, eleventh and twelfth. She's no longer taking care of that. That, so Mr. Sidman is going to take care of the attendance for the eleventh and twelfth grade. Not Ms. Goodwin anymore.
Right, because somebody had said, I thought it was the credit policy. See, it's like one of the parents had asked me, that's what I'm saying. Why has the credit policy not been suspended? Is there a reason why each grade level doesn't manage their own credit policy? So they know their students and they get to know each student on each grade level's special needs. Which they make sense, that makes sense. That's why I'm.
Go ahead.
Because no offense, I just don't want, it's like one administrator doesn't know all four grades. They know their grade.
That's why they will handle the attendance.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, with the change, listen, with, by the way, I'm Mark Sidman, I'm the assistant principal at the high school, for those who may not know me. And uh, we're here tonight with Michelle Goodwin. She's another assistant principal at the high school and. We're happy to have Michelle.
Go by the speaker.
And then uh finally, um, Michelle Lox wanted to be here tonight. Uh, she's dealing with um her own personal illness right now. But she's watching from home. Hello, Michelle. Yes. The, the uh interventions that happen at, at, at grade level, they have been continuous even under the past practices that have been in place. Whereas we had a dean of students at one time, we then took on grade level responsibilities such as discipline. But that individual was responsible for overseeing the management. The management of the attendance po- uh policy. And the practices at the high school as well as the credit policy and the practices associated at the high school. It was that individual also oversaw at the uh different times of the year. Um, the, the appeals hearings that we talked about because half your courses can have appeals in January. For uh, that could happen again in June and that full year courses, the appeals would happen in uh, in uh June. What I think everybody's not recognizing is that there's ongoing intervention throughout the course of the year and always has been. Where phone calls have gone out to parents. Social workers have been involved, guidance counselors have been involved. And uh, you know, most importantly, the grade level uh administrators have been involved and we know uh many of the students who were habitually absent.
So you guys have called. You, you guys have called and the guidance have called. Every student has been at least gotten a phone call from somebody.
Regards to what, attendance?
In regards to attendance, whether it be attendance, their credit, whether it's been in regards to. They're, they're making their scheduling next year. Has every student been, been touched with a phone call?
Well, the scheduling hasn't uh fully taken place yet. We'll, we'll cover that in a.
That's next, yeah.
All right, I can't speak that everybody has received phone calls, but a combination of phone calls and letters. You do know that uh phone calls go out from our attendance office when a student is absent daily. It happens at uh roughly nine thirty in the morning and two oh six in the afternoon. Those are.
But does that always happen is my question?
That happens on a daily basis when students are absent.
Right, I understand that, but what I'm saying to you is, there are some parents who are saying that they're not getting these phone calls. That their child's being marked absent. And then they find out that the child loses, is losing credit, course credit.
Well.
Because of absences.
They're receiving letters, for example, I, my, my own office has sent out letters this year pertaining to uh, you know, the absences. Because I've had teachers write up quite a few students that have literally disappeared during the course of uh the lesson when they're home virtual. We don't know why. So we, I make phone calls, I talk to those parents who've been written up. Because the assumption is, where did they go? Are they having technical issues or are they cutting the class? And it, it becomes, you know, I'm the judge and the jury on that as the eleventh, twelfth grade administrator. And I contact and I assess and find out. Often it's very difficult to even make contact with some of the parents. So what I've done is I've printed out the attendance report. I've uh, you know, in certain circumstances, printed out their progress report as well as their uh report card. And sent them home to the parents via mail and in many cases certified mail.
But that's the whole point that I was trying to make about the credit policy and the attendance policy. You know, the eleventh and twelfth grade is better than another A P, correct?
But.
You're gonna know their special needs. And if a child has something going on at home or if a child has some special issue, whatever it is. Wouldn't you know better than one of your other fellow A Ps? I'm, I'm just asking.
I would probably be uh better uh acclimated to working with that student, that's true. But let's go back.
So wouldn't, but that's what I'm saying, wouldn't it make more sense? On a year like this with COVID? I do, but I'm just saying, wouldn't it make more sense with, with COVID this year? I, I, I just, I'm saying with COVID this year and all the issues, wouldn't it make more sense? For each grade level to have their administrator handling their issues? Because we have a lot of kids, we have, have you looked at the numbers? We have a lot of kids that are failing, way more than last year.
I think, I think what we're. If, if I could just try to respond to that. You know, working with Mrs. Goodwin, with Ms. Goodwin, who's overseeing the credit component to this. As well as, you know, she's attached to the attendance office with the attendance office doing what they do operationally every day. We're always in communication. If I get certain information, certainly it's gonna be communicated between the two of us. Where she comes in is uh providing the oversight when it comes time, if it comes time, to the credit appeal process. And again, that's very subjective and that's where it works to the student's benefit. You have to understand that. We grant more appeals based on the uh meetings that we ultimately end up having with the parents and the student. To discuss why were all these absences uh taking place this year and they present what the mitigating issues are. Now sometimes it's taken almost several months for the parent finally to get in to respond. This has been. The pattern over the years. And uh, when you start to think about numbers, all right, you have to understand that this isn't a huge number of kids that we're dealing with. All right, it's a smaller number.
Have, have you guys had any appeals happen so far in January?
We're, we're not, we're not at that point yet because of uh, we're not at the end of the second quarter. So for half your classes, there is the possibility there could be appeals for students who may have lost credit.
But there have been parents that have been called. And told that their students are failing. And that they're not going to graduate unless they go to an appeal process. Do you know that?
No, I didn't know that.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm letting you know it, it has happened. So if it has happened. Okay, it has happened.
Is it, yeah, just a question, phone call or a letter?
I think Ms. Goodwin may have handled a few of them. But uh, my, my, my whole issue I think is that. I, I appreciate you guys giving us a whole overview. But the overview has some flaws because unfortunately. You could tell me this is, this is all gonna be done and it's all great, but it, but it's not being done and that's the issue. The issue is, we're saying that there's appeals in January, but we're already half, we're into January, it's the twelfth of January. We have, hold on, we have, we have people, kids who are, who are failing and when. And some parents said that they haven't gotten contacted. Okay, I, I'm just go, that's what I'm saying. Maybe they have now, but they weren't contacted as of three, four days ago.
Jackie, I just wanted to show you clear. I, I want you to be clear. I call kids that are failing.
Yes, I heard that. Okay, there are kids failing that did not receive a phone call.
Seniors, every senior that I've called, every senior who is failing, a, a class required for graduation or more than one class.
Okay, there are kids that had a class requiring graduation and did not get phone calls.
All right.
I mean, I'll speak to you later, but I'm saying, it's, it's not, listen, like I said, I just wanna make sure that the kids graduate. It's about the kids. It's not about you, it's not about me, it's about them. I wanna make sure that these kids graduate. This is a year where there are so many challenges. I commend the teachers, I commend the administration for doing what they have to do every day to make sure that these kids. Are getting an education and that they're safe and healthy. But is that first and foremost is safe and healthy. But I also wanna make sure that we're guiding parents in the right direction. I, I, like, I wanna know, when, when are these kids gonna have their schedules? There are parents like myself. Who have eighth graders coming into the high school next year.
Can we just finish this?
But, but.
All right, so with this attendance policy, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear that it's two different parts here. You're asking about suspending the credit policy. I mean, that's up to everybody in this room. We can't suspend the attendance policy, it's a state regulation, but if.
Which one?
The credit.
Okay, so yeah, they're correct. We need to follow. Not only the board of education's policies, but you have to follow the New York State Education Department requirements. With regard to attendance, the attendance policy. Is a required policy that every school district in New York State has to have.
Non-attendance, the credit policy.
Okay, which we're discussing is kind of connected in the sense that if you don't attend, then that affects your credit. So you have to be very careful in terms of um. Um, trying to amend the policy. In that it has to be consistent with the requirements of New York State. So that's beyond the control. Of a building, of the superintendent or the board of education. I know what other school districts are doing. They have an attendance policy that's consistent. With New York State Education Department rules and regulations because everybody has to have it. What it, what I'm hearing, the staff saying, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, is that during the appeals process, all of those factors come in. So to the extent there was a concern about. Not being able to attend because there's no internet access or whatever the issues may be. Um, it sounds like the staff is taking that into consideration. In determining whether to count that against the child or not. Am I correct?
Yeah, if you look at the uh last page here, the paragraph in red, please note. This is for the twenty twenty one school year. I don't have to read it. To you, but you can see extenuating circumstances, technology issues, illness, family hardship. That's all being taken into consideration. Just to give you a comparison, two years ago when we had the appeals, I went back and I looked into how many. I had this ready for last board meeting. Seventy four percent of the students that appealed were eventually granted credit. And that was in a non-COVID year, seventy four, so. And in a year like this, I can, I'm assuming a lot, would be a lot more than that. Any kids who had issues, didn't have the technology, had a family member who was ill. We're not, we're not, no one's looking to hurt the kids.
Do the parents know, because I'm reading this, this is good, do the parents know? The request must be received within ten days of notification that the child has lost credit?
When, when the letter goes out, is that in there, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
Hello. So each call that I make, because there are a variety of different letters. I have different conversations with the parents. Once I reach them. When there is a loss of credit, it indicates that they are entitled to the appeals process. I also send home an orange colored form. If you'd like, I can send you the forms and you can distribute them to the board should you choose. That indicates what happens in the loss of credit um process. They have ten days to respond if they would like to appeal. It is challenging during these times to contact many parents, especially the students who are completely virtual. So again, if Dr. Adams would like, I can send you a copy of each letter. I can send you when they go home. Please note that I just got the green light. I started November sixteen. I got the green light to begin this process just before Christmas. And so several students were already far, uh, I should say, uh, further along in the credit policy. When we like caught it than they normally would be if I had been here since the beginning of the year. Unfortunately, I just began it on November sixteen. But again, it's indicated. I'm happy to provide you with those letters and any questions the board might have, I will gladly answer.
Thank you, and I wanna say thank you because a parent did reach out to me and say they reached out to you and that you, you helped them. I actually, so I think I, I told, I definitely told one of the other people. I think I told my, I think I told you, Linda.
And it is an unfortunate conversation to have, but the credit policy as well as the attendance policy. Reinforces that we're in school to be in school despite the fact that we're virtual. And so I think it's great that Mr. Middleman mentioned earlier that the middle school principals are talking about. Virtual learning expectations because it is a fluid situation this year. We are learning as we go and we just have to stay healthy and get to June. And we will do that and, and conversations like this are important. So thank you for bringing up any concerns. Any parent who's watching, I can assure you that should you bring a, a concern to the high school administrative staff. Myself, Mr. Moran, Mr. Sidman, Ms. Lox at home, we will gladly address it. Just bring it to our attention and we're here to help you. Okay, thank you.
Anyone have any other questions?
I have a statement and I have a question. So I'm gonna start off with my statement. I am not assuming responsibility for children, particularly on the secondary level. For not having one-on-one devices. I advocated for this a few years ago. It did not happen. And at least pushback from board members and administration. So I just wanna go on running publicly that I wanted one-on-one devices for support of a wide, the only community. For our children to have one-on-one devices. So putting that aside.
But that was years ago, right? When was that?
A significant number of students had failed multiple classes this marking, this first marking period. Versus last year's first marking period. We have seen double to four times the amount in date and percentages of multiple students that have failed multiple classes. What do you think is the driving force and how do we justify this to achieve students' success?
You know, I, I. Oh, miss that, I'm sorry. Go ahead, miss the question.
Hi, Ms. Ogles. So I think that what you brought up is important and there are several factors. I understand that we didn't provide technology. I know Mr. Middleman is working on that and hopefully we have some good news soon. This, we're in unprecedented times during a pandemic. So there are a lot of moving parts. And each and every child and their situation and their grade level. Um, comes with. A different set of circumstances that we have to have the patience to work through. So an initial reaction to perhaps a letter. Or something that makes us uncomfortable that we receive in terms of news regarding our child's education. We can't be reactive. We have to decide how we're going to respond and that starts with them reaching out to us as the administrative team. The other thing I will say in terms of the credit and the attendance policy. Is that it's very important to contact the attendance office when you are having Wi-Fi issues. When technology um becomes a challenge in your home, you can contact an administrator. But daily, we need you to be in communication with us regarding absences so that our letters, our information and how we can, we. If that's not correct, we can't decide how to best serve you. So, Ms. Ogles, I'm not sure if that answers part of your question. Does it?
Uh, not entirely because I think the biggest, the biggest component that I. May think that we've been uh, we are facing is, you know. Children can only sit in front of a computer for so long. I've, I've done online classes. I know after hour number three, I, I, my mind is quickly spent. What are we doing to have our children engaged? In wanting to be part of the learning, uh, virtual learning models? Uh, you know, are, are students just logging in, checking, saying, hey, I'm here and napping for the thirty-five minutes that they're in class? Are they engaged in some way?
Well, I think. I'm sorry.
You know, is that, is that a piece of it? You know, I understand this is completely multifaceted. I understand that a lot of homes don't have technology or don't have the Wi-Fi. And there's definitely a lot of moving parts. You know, we started in March, you know, going on a lockdown. We, you know, we, our children went virtual from March thirteenth all the way till June. We had the summer to try to be proactive and plan for this. So now we're. As we have completed um market, first marketing period and heading into the second marketing period. You know, my concern is, one, that the children of last year, you know, not being able to get. Everything that they need for proper education. And as it's somehow being reflected now when we start to see this uh, this significant amount of um. Uh, you know, failed classes. Um, are we still, are we looking at, and I mentioned to Dean Middleman. That from this point forward, he's gonna supply the board after every marketing period the data comparing this year to last year. You know, the board wants to see these children succeed. This is the reason why each and every one of us are on the board. And then we wanna hear from the administration, we wanna hear from teachers. How can we help our students? To provide the best, pretty appropriate education that we can right now. I understand we're under COVID time, I understand there's restrictions, I understand there's certain things. You know, are the children who are going fully remote, are they doing better than the kids that are doing hybrid? You know, is there any way we can start slowly bringing back, maybe starting with our special education students? maybe starting with our special education students on the secondary level, bringing them back every day, and they'll slowly follow thereafter. But, you know, what concerns me is what is happening today is going to have long-lasting impacts. And I really want to try to get ahead of things. I'm a projective thinker. I, I, I sometimes think ten steps ahead. I'm trying for us to think ten steps ahead to bypass some of the problems we, we may be seeing.
As a person in education, I understand your frustrations. I think one part of your question dealt with the difference between being present in class and participating in class. Even if this wasn't a hybrid year, let's say that Mrs. Kennedy was in my class, Mrs. Napolitano was in my class, Mrs. Kennedy may choose not to participate in that year. That would result in a discipline referral. Beyond that, I do not have the data concerning the rest of your questions. I'm sure Dr. Adams and her cabinet continuously reviewed different ways to engage the students. I was in the classroom at the start of the year, and I had an exceptional experience. Uh, my students worked very hard, and I have to compliment them. So with that said, I don't have the answers to all your questions. It's a conversation I'll have with my building principal. And regardless of whether it was a hybrid year or not, there's definitely a difference between being present in class and participating in class. And I'm sure Mr. Moran may want to.
Yeah, so I, I'm just going to jump in.
Sorry, Mr. Mittelman.
As I had spoken earlier, um, we are putting together a committee to look at online engagement for our students, and, and what that means is, is looking at what the responsibility or the expectation is for the student when they are not in the schoolhouse. So that's something that we're putting together. It's something we have identified as a challenge. Um, and as the year has gone on, it, you know, it, and the, the number of cases have increased, um, it continues to be a bigger issue for us. So it's something that we're putting together, and we'll have expectations out for our instructional staff as far as what they should be seeing, uh, from their students, as well as from the, the, the students themselves, as well, and information for the parents. You know, there are many factors that go into this, and we're still going through all of it um, to make sure that we are identifying what the real challenges are and providing those remediations for those challenges. Um, some of it's engagement, some of it is participation and attendance. Some of it is a, a backslide from the challenges we faced last spring. Um, and it's making sure that we have all of those pieces of data so that we can individualize the attention to students as best possible. So, you know, we are meeting as an administrative team this Friday, again, to go through some of this data and discuss some of the plans moving forward. So I will have an update to the board after that.
Thanks, Dean.
So, so.
I got it.
I'm sorry, just one more question, one last question, Jackie. So, Dean, are we eventually going to start looking at our special education kids on the secondary level to start becoming, you know, the children that are more severe and then coming down to start having them in on an everyday basis? Because I think that is extremely important as well.
Didn't I ask for that in November? We were going to do it in December, and then the numbers didn't pan out, and also the numbers went up. So the numbers went, we weren't going to bring people back?
Uh, yeah, we, we actually did the research. We had, uh, Dr. Hendy Amontis work with our secondary principals, and what we found was that we have, you know, earlier today, we, we interviewed a director of, of, um, a potential candidate for director of special education. We have about a thousand students in the district with IEPs. So if we were looking to bring back the students that had IEPs, and we do have our most significant students at the secondaries are in every day. Um, but our students who are just a level below that, who are in our self-contained classes, our special classes, our small classes, um, or are in resource room, in that kind of range from, uh, inclusion classes to resource to special small classes, the number of students that would be coming in every day would actually push us over the, the social distancing rules, both on the buses and in our classes. Um, so at that point, when we realized we could not remain within the CDC guidelines of the six-foot social distancing is when we stopped looking at it because the numbers started to climb. Um, CDC actually updated their, their, uh, school protecting strategies, protecting K-12 school staff from COVID um, on January fourth, and I was looking to see if they were going to start to let us slide on that a little bit, and they did not. So if the numbers begin to go down in the community and we, the board feels comfortable going against the CDC guidelines, I personally don't. Um, I think we've been extremely lucky right now because our protective measures have worked to keep us as safe and healthy as possible. Um, so if we, you know, once they say we can stop doing the six-foot social distancing, my first group I would certainly bring back would be my, my students who, um, have special needs, without a doubt. We look, we looked to do it already, and it just didn't work.
My questions next are about scheduling. I just wanted to ask, this is what I was saying before. Not everyone is as well-informed as the parents who have children that have already gone through the high school, let's say. So for the incoming students, how is the average parent or person doing course selections with their first high school?
Course selection, you want to, Mr. Sidman.
You know, just before I answer that, um, I, I really have to say that our teachers, number one, along with our counseling and support staff, our aides, they have done a phenomenal job in that building, adjusting and, uh, dealing with every curveball that's been thrown to them to try to, uh, you know, address and, and really, uh, demonstrate that they are vested in these kids, in, in our student's success. They go out of their way day in and day out. That's, that's what I observe. I, I'm really impressed by that. And, um, one of the tools, one of the levers that I hope this Board of Education recognizes that we need, and it will be done with sensitivity, is that credit policy. If you take the credit policy away, it's a tool, it's a lever. It is not intended to hurt the kids, all right? It's intended to make sure that we can, uh, have some insurances that they are there in their classes. And then if there's any questions, I, I, I really mean this. You're going to need to trust the judgment working with us that we are going to do our, our due diligence to look into these matters. And, and I'll go back to the, uh, the end process if it has to reach that. The importance of that appeals hearing tends to work to the student's benefit when they go through the different mitigating issues that came up that caused them possibly to be absent or because of the technology issues that you brought up, which in some cases are very legitimate, all right? That will be recognized. We do not want to punish these kids for the challenges that they're encountering, but we want to hold students accountable for participating in class.
Okay.
Please.
But again, okay, now back to this one. I'm sorry. This is, I'm trying to find out, how is it? So do you oversee guidance? Are you the one that oversee guidance?
Yes, I oversee guidance with, um, Mrs. Lox.
Okay, so, so a question was, when course requests are put into the computer system for the computer to return a schedule for each student, who reviews this for accuracy?
Okay, let's, let's at least back up a little bit for the process. The process, uh, that, that has unfolded is definitely a unique one this year. We, we've lost out on that personal touch as far as being able to, number one, have a curriculum fair. All right, go down to the middle school and bring our students together, both at RMS and OBS for a presentation in the auditoriums there. That was a great way to introduce ourselves to the students. We need to be a little creative. We need to be innovative in terms of how that might happen. But I want you to understand, at least for the middle schools right now, the, the course selection process hasn't gotten fully underway yet. It's about to.
What about the?
Well.
The upcoming seniors for next year, have they all been already, are they already starting theirs?
This is what the process is, okay? The, the course guide itself, which is really the, the bible of all the courses that we offer, the descriptions, the flow charts, the prerequisites, everything you really want to know about the high school course offerings are in that guide. That was published to the web back on December ninth. Also, Dr. Adams right now is giving out the course guide a hard copy. I brought everybody a hard copy this evening. Thank you. That, you know, a lot of work goes into that from, uh, working with our teachers, our directors, our chairs. They all have a hand in the development of that guide, and that guide really is a wonderful resource in terms of understanding not only the, you know, required courses for graduation, but also the, that wide, uh, variety of electives that we offer. And I got to say, we're really fortunate that we have a Board of Education, a central office, and a community here in ConnectOne that supports all the course offerings that we provide. Now, we would have loved to have done a curriculum fair that we've done in the past. We would have loved to brought the kids down to guidance. It's going to be a little different this year. But the process really began back on December tenth, you know, when the course guide was finalized and published to the web. And then on the webpage, and you'll see if you take a look, uh, how intuitive the webpage could be in terms of ease of use with the parent letter that's there, with the hyperlinks that are embedded in the letter so that parents can easily navigate with their kids to the course selection sheet and go to the course guide. And most importantly, uh, as a resource, our teachers, guidance counselors, directors and chairs, as well as the building administration, are there to answer any questions that the parents have. We tried to avail ourselves of that. We tried to get that communication out there. And I have to tell you, you know, I tried to get the communication out via, number one, each grade level Google Classroom for grade nine, ten, and eleven. All right, then I tried to use School Messenger to communicate with parents and the households, both via email and through the, uh, voice messages. And by the way, for those parents at home, yes, on the face, uh, behind those phone messages, they always wonder who's this guy calling. But there's so much that goes on day in and day out in terms of, uh, trying to build awareness about the course selection process, including the announcements that are made in the morning, you know, when we do our pledge of allegiance. So I can't, I can't think of any other way except for the in-person components that we're missing. And one of the other pieces that, uh, you know, recently was introduced was by the directors and chairs working in collaboration with the teachers, the Curriculum Corner. It's another tool this year that was developed so that, again, they could acclimate and get the, uh, parents and the students more familiar with, again, the wide variety of the course electives, and then they can go back to the course guide once they get their appetite went a little bit to determine what they want and what take.
Still get, will they still get called down, though, and sit with a counselor?
What's going to happen is this, the, the parents are being asked to submit their course selection sheets to the guidance office. If they have to mail it, we accept it by mail. If they have to drop it off at the high school, that's fine also.
Thank you for extending it.
Uh, listen, as far as the timeline went, by the way, we looked at that window of time. Uh, we were hoping, we, well, we wanted to actually end it before the holiday. Then we said, you know what, let's give parents the holiday. We really weren't receiving a lot of phone calls in the offices, which concerned us tremendously. But then when we got back, we knew based on the development of the timeline that there was going to be cushioning there so that we were able to extend the timeline. It was, you know, it was our dirty little secret, so to speak. We knew it was likely going to happen. And, uh, it also gave us more time to adjust and come up with additional resources, such as the Curriculum Corner. So the parents are sending these course selection sheets. What's going to end up happening is the counselors are going to begin inputting those at the end of January. And then at the end of, uh, end of January, and the reason why it's going to be done then is our teachers, starting on the, uh, starting yesterday, our core academic teachers began the inputting of the course requests for all the core courses in English, Science, Social Studies, Math, and Global. Any concerns, any issues, we, we recommend strongly that, you know, the students or the parents contact the teachers to discuss what the student is going to be recommended for by the teacher for next year. That's consistent, but the timeframe is different than the way we've done it in the past. All right, that usually happened earlier, before even the student course selection started. Because if anybody's had kids go through the high school, it was February when the students came down to the guidance department via their social studies classes to have the one-on-one meetings. But what's going to happen is that, that counselors are going to input from those sheets, the course selection sheets, all the electives. They're going to take, have a chance, when they start doing this at the end of January, to review the core academic classes that the, that the teachers have put in. And then if there are any issues or concerns, they'll call a, a student down because it may be that maybe the student didn't choose enough electives to fill up their, uh, nine-period day.
So not every student's going to get called down?
There's a possibility that is correct. However, there'll be an opportunity where the verifications go out. That's the course request verifications, once they're in the computer, and we also determine what courses are going to run based on what we call a simple tally. Because everything's driven by the course requests. If we get unfortunately an elective that doesn't get a lot of, uh, you know, a lot of, I guess, you know, the course request, we won't be able to run that elective. Then the counselors have to look at it and say, all right, what other electives are available for this student? They're going to have to select something else. There's also the possibility something might be so popular that our, uh, underclassmen may have to select something else. We always try to give priority to the seniors with the electives. So there will definitely be meanings. The counselors are definitely going to reach out, but it is definitely, let's not mistake this, i- it's going to take a different shape this year. But I have to encourage again our parents and our students, if you have a question, reach out to the teacher, reach out to the counselor. They're there to support and help through the process.
Well, now I at least know, if they have an issue, I was told tonight, so I will at least let the community know, if they have an issue, they're to go to their teacher or guidance counselor. If that doesn't work, go to your administrator in the building. And if that doesn't work, you have to call Dean Mittelman.
No, no, you left out, you left out our wonderful directors and chairs.
Well, that's what they told me. That's what she told me.
So, so it depends what the question is.
Yeah.
Because if it's a question about curriculum, it's a question, let, let's say that there is a math teacher that the parent didn't.
Have a complaint.
Whatever, but, but it does depend because if it's going to be something about, let's say, a math teacher, you're going to go to the math director before you hit the principals or the APs, and then it goes up to Mr. Mittelman, it goes to me after that. Again, earlier we said, call a board member. The board member can call me. I can figure out where, where it needs to go. We can start from there. That, that works out too. But the truth is, they really should start with the teacher that they have the question with. So if it's a scheduling issue, they should call their child's guidance counselor. If their guidance counselor doesn't give them what they need, then you go to either, um, Mr. Sidman or Mrs. Lox, who are in charge of that department. After that, you can go right up to Mr. So it depends on the pathway, and maybe we should put it on the, on the website, you know? Here's your question, here's, here's the pathway, and we can, we can certainly put something together like that.
I, I think the other issue is, I think we really need to discuss, maybe at the next meeting, I don't know how you, you know, you'd have to bring in that maybe guidance. I don't know how you do that, or, or you talk to them and get whatever from them. I, I think that it's, it's imperative and important that, that they speak to every student this year. I, I really think that's imperative. Like, I understand that the case loads are, are high. I get it. And I commend them that, you know, it, we're grateful to have them there, and we want everybody to stay as safe and healthy as possible. But at the same time, we have to make sure that the kids who are having a stressful and mentally stressful and straining year get that, get the help they need and guidance to really guide them and give them help in, in the pathway of how, because isn't guidance supposed to be the ones that help them in the pathway to go to college, in the path to make their interviewing, in the path to... So these are all these things, like especially seniors and eleventh graders. I mean, I would say tenth, eleventh, and twelfth is the most important, but then you have the ninth graders. It's their first year, so they really need to speak to guidance too because they need to get a handle on if they have any issues, who do they go to to talk?
Right, and, and I have to, you know, I have to give a plug to our counselors because they really are seven individuals that if you were to speak to them about a particular student, and this has happened, you know, for all the years I've been here, they can tell you, yes, I know this individual. I've met with this individual. I know their background. The counselors are, are a wonderful group, and, and the students know they can go into that counselor office and reach out to their counselors whenever the need be. And, uh, you know, what they really avail themselves to do often, and even in these pandemic times, if a student demonstrates a need where they have to see their counselor immediately, these are individuals that will drop everything and do drop everything regularly. And they work in coordination with the building administration, certainly the teachers, and also with our YFS staff. So everybody is working as a team. And, and it goes back, and I know there's been some questions that have come up about did they meet with freshmen? Yes, they met with freshmen. Did they meet with every single freshman this year? They made the attempt. It's been very difficult with the, uh, virtual environment, sometimes to make that connection, and they're continuing to try to do that. They're trying to make these things work for our kids. Um, our seniors right now, as you well know, they're in the middle of the college, uh, application process. I hope that many of them finished it up. Some still are, uh, getting their applications in because the final deadlines are, uh, here. And, uh, the counselors play an integral role in that, and they've continued to support the students and the parents through that process. And as I said, have continued to answer questions and make themselves available, um, via phone, via, uh, the, the, the meetings that they have personally with, uh, the students. The piece that we don't have this year are bringing the parents in for personalized meetings just because that's not something we're doing based on the pandemic. We just can't have all these people from outside in the building.
Well, there's a, there's a bunch of parents that, that, that say, or that, that have complained that their ninth graders have not seen guidance. So maybe when you guys, if you guys could, and Linda, maybe we could request this. A, I, I know I requested it earlier in the year, but it was too early with everything going on. I think it was like October, and I actually asked you to forget about it. But now I'd actually like to see it. I'd like to see that they spoke to every, every individual. Every ninth grade individual.
I, if I can, I would really appreciate for those parents to contact the guidance office.
I think, I think some have, and I think they've even gone as, as high as Mr. Moran. So, so I, I'm, I'm, I don't. So, so I, I'm, I'm, I don't want to speak about any specifics, but there are a group of people that are saying that a lot of disinformation, maybe they fell through the cracks, maybe, you know, like I know there's a lot going on. But again, not every ninth grader was spoken to, not every ninth grade parent was reached out to, not every senior parent who has lost credit and has already been told that they're going to have to appeal in June was spoken to. These are all things that maybe you guys, you know, can check up on. It maybe was an oversight.
Absolutely. You know, as I said a little bit earlier, and it's not just words, our entire faculty, staff, administration, they're vested in the success of the kids. You know, the kids don't exist for us. We exist for them. We recognize that. We're here to make sure that they have a successful high school experience, even during this pandemic. I think-
Listen, we, we say the same thing. We don't get paid to do this, I tell everybody. We do this because we volunteer to be elected, because I'm here for the kids. Everyone always asks, what are we here for? We're here for the kids. I don't want to see kids in front of me a week before, three days before, saying I didn't have an opportunity to get my credits because of blah, blah, blah. I want to see that we did everything in our power and in our, that we could to help these kids along.
Yes.
Because just as frustrated and stressed out as we are as adults, like I said, I appreciate everything that all of the staff, all the teachers, all the custodians, all of the security, all of the food workers, everybody has put into, our admin staff in the cabinet have put into making sure all the kids are safe and healthy and having a good year and that the staff is safe and healthy. But in that being said, I really want to make sure that seniors whose year is really not looking like a senior year, they don't have anything else that they have to worry about. These are kids who have already been accepted into colleges, but are worried about losing credits. So they're, they're really, and we have ninth graders who, like I said, this is a very strange first year in high, high school for them. Six, fifth graders, eighth graders graduating, moving up, strange year for them. We thought last year was bad, but at least they got a half a year of it being normal. So that's why I'm saying if there's anything we can do to help it along, if there's anything that you need from the board or from the super that we can all do to help you along, if there's equipment or something that we need, it's going to be budget season, let us know.
I, I think the, the real piece here is the collaborative piece of all of us coming together as a community, getting the word out, letting people know the resources are there for them. Letting them know, for example, I'll go back to our counselors, that our guidance counselors are there for them. I, I can tell you, the counselors do make that effort. If the, if the parents have any trouble getting through, you have a great level administrators that would be happy to make sure that that connection happens. These are caring individuals that want to be there for the students. And if they need additional supports, you, you know, the counselor's there, the YFS staff is there. But I can't under, uh, understate the teachers are there. And parents need to know that the teachers are, can be communicated with at any time, whether it be phone or email, and they will, uh, you know, get back to this parent in, in a reasonable amount of time. We're all adjusting, as, as we all acknowledged a little bit earlier, to this, this crazy landscape based on this pandemic. But we want to make sure, and you go back to the seniors, that they have an experience, at least they'll be somewhat memorable in a positive way. And we're trying to work with our teachers to come up with new innovative, uh, you know, programs that might be able to do that, similar to what we did last spring. And, you know, Mr. Moran played a, a really incredible role. You know, a, as you recall, when we tried to get out all those, uh, all the caps and gowns and, you know, the diploma, you know, all of that to the kids and, and try to make something special. It's hard under these circumstances, but you have to believe we are trying. And certainly our teachers and, uh, you know, counselors and, and all of our support staff are trying to make that happen on a daily basis.
Reed, for all ninth graders and stuff, uh, is there going to be summer school or something to help them along?
We haven't heard any updates regarding, um, any of the assessments, whether it be regions or the three through eight assessments. Nothing about summer school at this point, um, but we will, I'll keep the board updated once those, those plans come out.
So I do hear from middle school parents and, and their kids, some of them are really struggling.
So we, we, I've met with the middle school principals. Um, so they are in the process of putting together data sheets and plans for each of the students who have any challenges, and I'll be sharing that shortly with the board.
Thank you. I, I think I hit on everything. Let me just think. I think I did. Mark, do you have anything you want to add? Mark, you don't like my questions?
No, I didn't say that. You're good.
I love you too, Mark.
I didn't say that, but sometimes I'll give a person a chance to talk. But anyway.
Um, just, just one last point, and then, and then, just, just in terms of the contacting of the guidance office also. Um, there is, uh, when you go to the guidance office webpage, it, it outlines a very easy process to follow where they can simply email the secretary. The secretary will absolutely set up a, a phone appointment for a parent to contact the counselor. And if they'd like, they can copy, uh, any of the building administrators associated with that grade level. And, uh, you know, just so we can all work together to ensure the connection happens. But that information's out there. I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Warshaw.
It might not be for you guys, it might go to them, so hold on. Um, the regions for seniors, has it been suspended? Has it been?
It's been discussed. We haven't heard anything yet.
So there are going to be regions?
As of right now, the assessments are, are on the schedule. We, we delivered, given. So it feels like the three-grade assessment, we wanted those as well.
Okay.
Um, we, I have a proposal for it last Friday, um, but the update says that they're not there.
Now, what about the, we have a PSAT, right? An SAT coming up or no?
We have a PSAT on January 26th with-
Is that all, is that all situated? Can, can you speak about that? Is it?
So we're currently planning, um, or outlining that day, and we are excited. We have well over 200 students registered, and I'm sure they're getting ready and they're eager. And that's really all I have to say on that.
Oh, well, I wish them all a lot of luck and thank you all for making that happen for them. I know that these kids really have been worried about all this testing. So I appreciate all of you that are putting the time in to take care of that.
I will say this, today, um, we were delivered the student manuals, so, and the exams. Um, so we will be communicating with the public within the next few days how they can pick up their student manuals. So you'll see that information, they'll get connected on that as well.
Excellent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, I mean, anybody else?
Yeah, so I just wanted to piggyback on what Chad said. You know, when I looked at the numbers, um, obviously the great concern is making sure that our seniors are going to graduate, you know. Again, there was a significant, significant number over last year of students that had failed multiple classes. So, um, you know, Moran and I touched base, and I'm glad to see that, you know, he's reached out to the students and, you know, uh, to see whatever it is they need, um, to, you know, pass, get the credits necessary. Um, without divulging too much information, Mr. Moran, um, do you have a sense on why these seniors, uh, have failed multiple classes?
A lot of the parents that I spoke to, I spoke the last couple of days just because, you know, uh, I had the time in the building because the students were virtual. It's a lot of the kids that are fully virtual who are struggling. And I spoke to the parents and, you know, and I said, as a family decision, if you were unsure about coming back to the building, because I did speak to them about going hybrid. Um, some of them were receptive to it, some of them were unsure. I had one student today opt to go to the alternative school, so, um, just a lot of, you know, they're struggling. Every parent I spoke to, it was like the same conversation. So I told them, you know, I looked at the teachers that they had, and they said, you know, some missing assignments, I don't know, it might be too late. I emailed the teacher, said, you know, please call his mom and let her know if her son can still get these assignments in that we do before the holidays. And the teachers have been great getting back to them. So, uh, it seems to be, Mylan, it seems to be, you know, uh, a lot of the fully virtual kids and, you know, the same thing. They're just struggling, sitting at home, it's tough for them to sit in front of a computer and just do the work.
Now, are they provided extra help, like we were doing on a hybrid, uh, like we're doing on a hybrid?
I mean, they could work that out with the teacher. You know, if they notify a teacher, a couple of parents asked me about that today, and I told them the same thing, you know, the teachers will bend over backwards for these seniors. They'll bend over backwards for anyone, but especially the seniors. They don't want to see their class be the reason the students don't walk. But, you know, I, I encourage them to reach out to the parent, uh, I'm sorry, the teachers on that.
And, and how do they work out, like say gym or electives, when you're, when you're fully virtual?
What do you mean, how do they work, how, how do they work what out? I'm sorry.
Obviously, they're not, they're not in school, so how would a gym date? They just have to write assignments for like a gym class, like?
Well, the gym teacher can also do something, you know, uh, on video for the kids to do at home, or they can do a written assignment, but they like to do something, you know, moving around more often. Right.
Right. And by the way, I do want to commend the, uh, the staff, the PTA and, um, the administration at the high school. Uh, I saw you after Wednesday, one, one, Moran. Uh, you know, I get excited when I get to see kids, and, uh, it was definitely a beautiful event. And greatly appreciated by the community. I have to tell you, I waited all my 45 minutes and it was worth it. Um, so just please extend to the board our appreciation for anybody that contributed to make that a success. Because, uh, it really meant a lot to the community, especially during these times, just to see, you know, happiness and, and, uh, you know, spirit of politics.
Thank you. I mean, it looks like everybody chipped in. It was a wonderful event. It looks like something, uh, maybe we'll try again. All right, it was great. So I think, you know, we had a lot of club advisors who, uh, you know, had interest in being involved to get, you know, next year, you know, because now the clubs are up and running, so a lot of the other clubs who weren't participating in it this year, you know, asked if we can do it again next year, they would love to take part in it. So, so if we do it next year, it should be even bigger and better.
It was great. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I just want to, um, say something. If we can get like an email out to all the, um, parents and the students, um, basically just trying to think of some solutions, let them know about if they have attendance problems, that they know they need to reach their guidance council. So this way, it's taken care of because they said they're on it. But you know what? We got to stay on it also. So if we can get, yeah, you send out that email, let them know, and you have a record of it, this way it's documented, and we see it also about that. So this way we know it's going out about attendance problems. Same thing with anything else, with grades, passing and failing. So if we can get email out for them, um, I'm also going to, I, I thought what you said, Mr. Sidman, was great about the guidance council and everything like that. But my son was in school and he was kind of smart, and he really didn't have to talk to anybody. He went through and nobody really reached out to him. He didn't reach out to anybody. He got to school, he's doing well, he's in college. There are a lot of kids out there. I know you're saying the guidance council is reaching out to everybody. I don't think that's actually happened, where they make every single phone call. And if they are, God bless them. But if they are, have documentation. So this way when a parent comes to us and says, my son was never even called, we don't have to pick a side where at least if the guidance council has documentation of this happening, we're okay. We can say, listen, he called on this date, and this was the response he got, or he left a message. And it got to document it, it's got to be something that's solidified. So it's important. I mean, Mr. Moran, you getting up here and saying something is great, but now we need to document this because we are here for the kids. And I don't want to be put in a position where I don't, I got to say to a parent, I don't believe you. I'm never going to do that. Just like I'm going to say, I, I'm not going to tell you you're lying or anything like that. But at least if we have documentation, even from the guidance counselors, we know we're doing our part. And that's what's more important, that we're doing our part for the kids. So a, as I was noticing that, so all the, even the kids that are smart, the ones that don't need that call, this is a different year. So they might need that phone call. So I know a guidance counselor had my son, probably wouldn't have called them. But this year, maybe call them, how you doing? Everything okay? How are your grades? You got to stay on it because this is a different year. So this way that kid that isn't a student stays the a student. So you can get documentation of the guy, and I'm not trying to say they're not doing it, but we're missing, obviously nobody's perfect. So if we could just stay on top of that and do something like that. And, and it's the same thing with the attendance phone calls. I, I, my son used to get the phone calls when he missed school. Fortunately, he didn't miss a lot of school. But it happened. I agree that. But we sometimes, I don't know if we document it. With what's going on here, we need documentation. We need to be solid, solidified on everything. So this way, we know we're doing our part. Not that we're just taking somebody's word and okay. Because sometimes taking that person's word, that's where the confrontation comes in. Let's avoid the confrontation. Let's work together as a community, as a staff and as a board, to make it perfect. So, so I'm not, uh, objecting to what you said, or trying to, what I'm trying to say is let's make it better. And maybe make sure we solidify, well, that's all I, I really have to say. And Linda, that's why I think the letter's going out periodically. You send them out the emails, I think they're great. Maybe do it once a week, every Friday. Anybody, how was your attendance this week? If you had a problem, please, make sure you call your guidance council. We don't want, at the end of the year, I went through it last year, saying no to a kid or a parent walking in crying that her daughter's not going to graduate. I can't say no because she missed gym. And she, because it's just so hard to do up here, and, and I know we sometimes have to make those decisions. So if we can stay on top of it on our part, I won't feel as guilty. You know what I mean? I'm going to say, hey, we, we gave you ample opportunities. We sent out emails every week. Uh, that's what I'm looking to do. If we can do that as a team collectively, I think it would help the district better and would just help the students also. Um, I don't know if anybody else has anything else to say. Well, I guess I, I can close the meeting.
Just one moment, Mr. Warshaw. Uh, the high school administrative team just wants to take a minute to personally thank, uh, by name, a group that contributes greatly. Without them, a great many things do not happen there. And that's the Connectwood High School PTSA, Kim Trink, Ms. Su O'Shea, Ms. Duzak, and especially Mr. John Tadashi. Because we needed the winter spectacular this year. Thank you, Dr. Adams, for making it happen. Thank you to the Board of Ed for approving it, especially Mr. John Allen right here, um, who was cooperative. Uh, both he and Tim Dungate, without them and their crew, it did not occur. So especially High School PTA, Mr. Allen, thank you. Mr. Dungate, thank you. Uh, Dr. Adams and her cabinet and the Board of Ed, thank you so very much.
Well, the grounds guys were amazing too, because they, they put all those lights out. That was awesome of them.
So I just- Uh, John Allen was supposed to answer a few of my questions.
I saw him, but we go get, yeah. Oh, Dean had something to say too. Dean, please turn your camera.
Go ahead. Want to go, Dean? All right, I, I will be quick, Mark, I promise. Um, so to your, to your question, Mylan, um, so far, uh, we have seen a delay in the work being approved at SED. Uh, it has put a couple of the projects in question. But that being said, there are quite a few projects that have been approved. Uh, in fact, the board at the last meeting awarded the work for the OBMS and the RMS auditoriums. Uh, so that work is actually going to be beginning in February. I've spoken with the building principals, they're not using those spaces. So during the second shift, they're going to start getting in there and, uh, and prepping those spaces and making sure that we're going to have them fully available, fully renovated in time for September opening. Uh, the other project that was awarded was Sycamore. That's the HVAC system. That building, other than the atrium and a couple of classes over by the cafeteria, is getting a new HVAC system throughout the entire building, uh, that will improve the air quality throughout the building as well as provide a much more reliable heat source. As far as the elementary libraries, you asked about that. Um, I did take a quick second to look at those in the SED portal. And Slocombe and Cherokee Libraries have both been approved. We are still waiting on approval from Idlehaw and Bostie. Those are the four elementary libraries that were slated to be addressed this summer. I expect we'll get approval for those two other libraries in the next month, which will give us enough time to bid them out and to make some determinations as to whether or not we're going to present them to the board and at what point. Um, other work that has been approved by SED but has not yet been awarded would be the press box and the comfort station at the high school and the maintenance building and the sand salt shed. Uh, those were bid out initially. Unfortunately, those prices came back higher than we had initially estimated. So until we get some numbers from other projects, such as the elementary libraries, um, we are going to hold off, uh, rebidding those until we know we have a little bit more wiggle room in some of the prices. So, you know, in total, it's, uh, it's upwards of $20 million. There's quite a bit of work that we're, we're looking to do. Uh, and it's important that we try to get as much done as possible because it also aligns the debt service that's retiring with the new capital work that we're proposing and has always been the plan since we started talking about this project several years ago. Um, not sure, did that answer enough of your questions?
Yes, thank you. So it seems that things are going along the best they can in these circumstances.
Yeah. Yeah, like like I said, I mean, the two auditoriums at the middle school and the HVAC system at Sycamore, I mean, those are both by themselves pretty massive projects. Um, and they are both, you know, they are all awarded and and, uh, and, excuse me, they've all been bid out and awarded. Uh, and I've already met with the contractors, we've already started establishing the scope of work, so we're gonna start seeing work in those locations as early as the February break. And one more, uh, big piece of information actually relating to capital um, indirectly, is the energy performance contract was approved today. So that's what's going to give us the ability in future years to reduce our utility expenses by fifty percent. Um, it's going to put solar panels at almost all the buildings, uh, get a good portion of the buildings off the grid. Uh, it's going to replace the heat heating system at the high school, uh, whole whole bunch of other good work that's that's included in that as well, so that approval was just done today, and now central office will start working on the financing piece of it so that we can, uh, line that up, and then actually they can start ordering and scheduling the work, hopefully as early as the summer for elements such as the light fixtures um, and the boiler room first and foremost.
Thank you. Uh, and my one last question would be for Linda. I noticed that you prepared the resolution, uh, for the, uh, uh, the board stance on mandating, uh, COVID vaccines. It was not on the agenda today, so please make sure it's on the next agenda.
Absolutely.
Yes, I'm not advocating for one way or the other. I think we all can agree that we're advocating for parent choice when it comes to that vaccine, and you know how strongly it felt about the HPV. Again, parent choice, it's not up to the state or the government to infringe that on, uh, on parents' choice. So I appreciate you writing a great resolution for the HPV, as you know, that many of districts have taken your language or use part of your language, um, and there was a lot of support for that. Uh, I would anticipate that we probably have the same support too. Again, parent choice with the COVID vaccine. I understand right now it's, uh, it's not being, um, given to children, but at some point in time, I expect that it probably will be. So I just want to kind of get ahead of that and, uh, where the Connectwood stands on that particular item.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I I heard a quick question from Lee related to solar. Okay. So the the solar is is going to be spread out through the district depending on roofs um, and depending on the the tree lines available around it. Uh, if there's too many tree lines such as duffield, there's really not a good place because of the slope of the roof to put solar on that. But yes, uh, the age of the roof is being considered everywhere they're putting solar. In many cases, they're doing the carports that you see at a lot of the federal buildings. Uh, so those are gonna be at the high school, uh, you're gonna see those at Sycamore and the middle schools as well. Because they didn't want to put as much on the roof, and it's actually cost effective to put the canopies right in the parking lot. Yeah, they're they're, it's something that's, you you've seen it at the federal buildings, but now the panels are much more efficient. Uh, Smithtown was the first district to really do that last year. Uh, Brentwood is now doing a six-megawatt project, we're gonna be doing about three point three district wide, so about half of our our electrical utilities will be able to be reduced after this.
Thank you. Anybody else?
One last thing, um, we are very excited to announce that we did receive our initial shipment of Chromebooks. So the district received, uh, two thousand nine hundred and sixteen Chromebooks. Uh, we are tweaking our distribution plan. The priority will be, uh, starting at our high school and making sure that our hybrid and virtual students have the Chromebooks, and then rolling into the two middle schools. Um, we're hoping to be able to leverage some of the purchases that we made this year to be able to provide them for, um, some of our elementary students as well. Uh, we are still waiting for approval from smart schools, and we have not had that yet, um, which is holding up our second order of Chromebooks, so. But we're very excited about this process, and, uh, there'll be information going out to parents, uh, later this week and next week. Um, and, uh, that's it.
Good, everybody, good. Motion is second to adjourn the Connectwood Public Session Meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, have a good night, everybody, stay safe and healthy.
Have a good night, everyone, safe and healthy.
Have a good night, thank you.